Testing one, two, three. This will be the October 2nd, 2013 City Council Workshop Meeting, followed by the regular meeting.
I'd like to call to order City Council Workshop, October 2nd, 2013, approximately 6:30 PM, to interview board applicants. And our first applicant is Christina Leroux. Christina, just right there would be great. Make yourself comfortable and relax. And tell us a little bit about yourself and why you applied for these boards. And then each council member, if they have a question, they'll ask.
Okay.
And then what we do is, there's an agenda item. It's to the end of the meeting. We vote on board positions. Okay?
My name's Christina Leroux, and actually, I've only lived in Satellite Beach for
Pull the microphone up, dear.
Lived in Satellite Beach for just over a year. Came from California and moved here because of my husband. He took a position here in the area. I have, we have four children, and we purchased a house about maybe four or five months ago. And I just really want to become involved with the city. We plan on making this our permanent home. So I know we have really enjoyed everything so far about the city, and I just want to, you know, make that something that we can continue. And just really want to be involved.
Okay. Thank you very, very much. Who would like to start?
Hi, Christina. Just got a couple of questions. Well, just one question next. So you've got two boards checked off here. Which is, how much do you know about both of the boards, and which is your primary preference?
Well, I think, when I came in and spoke to Lenora, I had marked the wrong one. So she marked the correct one for me, which I think was the only one that had the opening. It was, I think it was for, just, was it?
Comprehensive Planning Advisory Board, I believe, has the two alternates.
Right. Had the alternate position in it.
Okay.
So.
What's your interest in that board? What do you see as your challenges, your strengths bringing to that board?
Well, I guess the biggest thing is the, I think it's the Michael Pecrotti Park that they're putting in over there off of Beach Street.
Right.
I know some of the neighbors, and I had concerns with that and with those plans. And I guess I got involved in that, you know, just talking. And so I thought, well, maybe we, you know, one of us needs a voice on the board. And so I was told that there was an opening. And so I thought, well, I'll put my name in and see if I can, you know, have our voices heard.
That's all I have, Ms. Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Who would like to?
Hi. I just wanted to say hello. And U of P, that's my old stomping ground. I'm actually from that area.
Oh, yeah.
And so, I'm sorry, couldn't hear. So you are the CPAB, is what's your, what's your primary board?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Hi. Can you speak a little louder for us, please?
Oh, sure.
Have you ever s-
I don't know if that microphone's even on.
Yeah, it's on. Okay. Have you ever seen our comprehensive plan?
No, I have not.
Um, here are my comments. I would love to place you on a board. Our Comprehensive Planning Advisory Board is one of our heaviest-hitting boards. When they say comprehensive planning, that's what they mean. And if you take a look at our comprehensive plan, then you see how wide the areas are in which they sit down and hammer out plans for the future. And in doing that, they bring with them a vision for the city. And maybe you have, I don't know, maybe you have already thought of a vision for the city. My guess is that since you haven't lived here very long, you really wouldn't have had the opportunity to do big-picture visioning. That being said, every board brings in new people who haven't done this before, and they really apply themselves, and they become very productive members. Would that be you?
Yeah, I think I definitely, anything I put my time into and effort into, I give it my all. And I would definitely do the same here.
And what is your availability for meetings?
I'm pretty flexible. I do work, but I work part-time at Melbourne Central Catholic. I teach five classes there. But my first class starts at 8:45 AM, and then my last class is completed by 1:30 PM. So I'm open pretty much all those afternoons, and evenings right now are open, weekends. So I think right now I'm pretty flexible.
Do they usually meet once a month on the third Monday?
Okay. That would definitely fit in.
Of the month? And so is that something you'd have availability for?
Oh, definitely. Yes.
And one of the things that the council, this council has been stressing is the need for every member, both regular and alternate members, to attend the meetings on a regular basis. And we ask that alternate members do that. They don't have a vote at these meetings unless they are substituting for an absent regular member. But by attending the meetings regularly, you become a part of the process. You understand the discussion, so that when it is your turn to vote, you're already up on the issue. And even though you don't have a vote in any motions that are made as an alternate member, you do have your say during the meetings. You are always welcome to provide your input. So I'm saying this just to stress the importance of knowing that any board that you are appointed to, you will be expected to attend regularly.
Okay. Yes.
All right. Do you have any questions of us?
Um.
Before these two gentlemen ask you questions?
Nothing yet.
Well, first of all, I want to welcome you to Satellite Beach, and thank you for stepping up and wanting to volunteer. You know, the points that Lorraine brought up, this particular board is a long-range planning board. I mean, if you're going into this board contemplating that you're going to have some input on that park, that doesn't happen on this board. This board really doesn't have anything to do with that scenario, especially where it is right now. It's more of a long-term vision for the city. And I think the terms that Lorraine used, where do you think we're going to be in 10 years? Where do you think we're going to be in 15 years? The things that our comp board looks at is the big picture of how different things, whether it be federal or state-implemented things, are going to affect our city, such as density, or height, or just a lot of different things. So this is what this particular board is looking at, is down the road. It's not anything that happens right now. And I think, you know, if you're comfortable with that, you know, you would probably be a good fit for this board, especially based on, you know, the fact that you say you are willing to put up the commitment. And this is a working board. This is probably, you know, some of the other boards in the city have things that come up that are, you know, here it is, let's make a decision on this, and then we're done with it. This is a whole different type of board. And there are things that will come up that will be tedious at times.
Right. Well, I definitely think, you know, I have that 10, 15 years to give, you know, at the state that I'm at right now. So I would definitely enjoy something like that.
Well, that's good, because, you know, we're also looking for younger people to step up and be the leaders of the future. And that's, that's what Satellite Beach has always been about. So welcome to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you very much for applying and trying to become part of our community. You had said first you were very interested, what mainly got you interested was the karate park and what people were talking. And because this is a little bit different than that, we're at a different stage, does it still fit your want and need?
Yeah. I mean, I think that was just sort of something that got me interested. But I would definitely like to be part of those type of discussions, and eventually, hopefully, decisions, you know, in the future. So, yes.
Well, thank you very much. The procedure is, at the end of the meeting, we take a vote on placing the positions. You're welcome to stay. See how the meetings run. The council meetings will start at 7:00. If not, McKenna, I know you have a family, we'll contact you.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Well, thank you. It was wonderful to meet all of you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Hi, Linda.
Good evening.
Good evening. Would you please over to the mic over here and sit down and, yes, relax, and introduce yourself too, as I know many of us know you already, but please state your name. And I understand, you know, you live in Satellite Beach is good enough, so tell us a little bit about yourself.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager, and fellow citizens. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'm, my name is Linda Loiso, and we basically owned our home in Satellite Beach since 2001. I worked for the city of North Miami Beach for 33 years, and started as the first female officer, worked my way up to chief. And was involved in many political battles to try to better the city, in so much as I wrote grants, reviewed grants, was on the Executive Board of Directors for the Justice, Criminal Justice Advisory Committees, which was appointees by the governors and one or two laypeople like myself that didn't have near the impact, but tried. I've also been involved in a lot of community affairs. I was president of the Chamber of Commerce, president of Colonna's Club, the first female president of the Dade County Chiefs, and was on the Board of Directors of the Florida Chiefs of Police, and for, on the committees for the International Association. I sat for over 20 years on the Pension Board for the city of North Miami Beach, and still currently sit there. And as a matter of fact, I just came from a seminar in Palm Beach and wanted to make sure I was here. Why do I want to do this? Well, I figured that, I came here many times, only for selfish reasons. I didn't want anything to happen to my residents, which was on the beach. And I recognized today, actually, I was, in one of the classes, there was a West Point Leadership Class, and one of the items they had on training was, how is your decision going to impact future generations? Not just your generation and the next generation, but seven generations to come. So I said, well, I think this is an opportunity to not only look at what we can do in this community for me, but what we can do for the future generations to come by smart planning, by thinking of others other than just how it impacts yourself, and by trying to bring more tax revenue into the city. And to me, that type of planning means more business. And I was involved in trying to attract businesses to North Miami Beach. We worked on doing job fairs, and we worked on actually planning and telling businesses how we were going to make, their crime rate was going to be lower in our city, and why it was, why it was a better city to come to. And we basically would move people in that direction. I lobbied at the State of Florida before, on bills, I worked with Gloria Estefan on a voting bill to make voting safer, and initiated many programs for children. So that's, in a nutshell, things I can think off the top of my head. I'm a little nervous, but I haven't done this in about four years. But that's who I am. I'm someone who thought I could just settle into retirement and not worry about anything, and realized that was being very myopic in my views, and wasn't thinking of anyone or anything other than doing that. And this brought it to light that I should involve myself more and see what I can contribute to this community.
Thank you very much. I want to start. Linda, you and I had a, thank you, we had a good conversation for about an hour or so on the phone, and I appreciate it. We have a very good mutual friend. One thing I know during our conversation, is time a problem? Are you have the time to sit on the board? Does it meet your schedule? Because I know we talked about how busy you were, and, you know, going to South Florida to visit grandkids or relatives and so forth. And I just want to make sure, because one of our big issues on our boards is we need to get people on our boards that are going to show up at the meetings and participate. So.
Well, in 20 years, I've never missed maybe one pension meeting, I can tell you that. And I drive to South Florida for that. I don't know how often your board meets, and I do know it's an alternate position. But I can tell you, if I'm actually on a board, I've never been an alternate, to tell you the truth, but if I'm actually on a board, I work my schedule to make sure that I'm at a meeting. I'm very committed. If I commit to do something, I want to do it right. So without having the schedule of how often the board meets, I can't answer that question honestly. But if, in fact, I were given the opportunity, I would make every effort to make sure that I rearranged my schedule. The only thing that we do that would inhibit that would be a cruise, and I usually plan those around my board meetings. And I'm limited, I'm not on the board anymore with the Chiefs Association, because I really didn't want to commit myself to more than I knew that I could actually do.
Thank you very much. Who would like to start?
Hi.
Hi.
I have several questions, just based on comments that you made. I'd like to make a point, because you seem to draw a distinction between regular meetings and alter, regular members and alternate members. We don't make that distinction. We expect our alternate members to attend the meetings as regularly as our regular members. The difference is, alternate members don't vote on motions, but they fully participate in discussions and the meetings and so forth. If they are substituting for a regular member, then they vote. But this council is putting an emphasis on regular attendance at meetings, and so that includes both regular and alternate members. You had checked two boards, CPAB and the Comprehensive Planning Advisory Board, and why did you pick those two?
I was told there was, I wasn't quite sure what board had the position open. I was trying to do it from memory, whichever board actually had an alternate position. I received a notification back from Lenore, Lenore, that there wasn't an opening on the board I checked. So then I said, well, I must have misunderstood. So that's how it ended up being that way.
Okay. So you know the opening is on the Comprehensive Planning Advisory Board?
Yes.
Okay. Have you ever seen our comprehensive plan?
No. I've only had it discussed with me by several people that live in the community.
Okay. You spoke about your activities in the past in your communities, trying to bring in more tax revenue and attracting businesses and that sort of thing. How do you see the relationship between that and the work done by the Comprehensive Planning Advisory Board?
Well, I think the Comprehensive Planning Advisory Board is, actually, its name speaks for itself. It's a comprehensive advisory board to talk about what can be done as a whole. In other words, putting all the components together. And that means streets, the waterways, the business section. And in order to not just view one component of it, you bring all the components together and see how they fit, and the puzzle works. I think that when we did a committee to try to revamp an area that was gutted, so to speak, in the city, and I sat on that committee for the comprehensive plan, we were able to put together how the surrounding community would network in with it. So I see my role to bring the knowledge that I have, and the process is the same. When you, when you work on something in a leadership capacity, the idea is to use the process that you already know works, and work with people, and try to see what would be the best for the future, bringing all the components together. In other words, okay, we would like some more businesses. We want to preserve the quality of life in the city and not do high-rises. We'd still like to have this be a tourist destination. We probably are going to need some underground wiring. How can we work with FPNL? Do we want to really revamp A-1A? What about the restaurants that have gone under, and nothing is happening there right now? Should we have a stronger code enforcement? And should we do that with a fine attached to it? Or should we go ahead and have volunteer people help maybe some of the citizens that can't do it? And how are we going to work that in? I see it as a total picture. Now, I might not have the right idea for this community, but, you know, that's one of the things I wanted to learn.
And did you say, did I hear you say that you wanted to keep this as a tourist destination?
Not a tourist destination, in so much as like Cocoa Beach-type thing, but that people would come here because they find our community, a very serene community. I had just had friends visit in a timeshare here in Satellite Beach. And one of the reasons they've been doing this for longer than I've lived here is because they like the pristine community. They like the serenity. They like this community the way that it is. They feel that the people that are in the political body here have preserved a way of life here. And you don't find that in some of the other communities. They look like cement jungles. And I think that's part of the comprehensive plan, to not get wrapped up in trying to get tax revenue to the point where you're willing to say, yeah, let's go ahead and build 12 stories. Let's not worry about the impact on the turtles. Let's not worry about the impact on the residents enjoying their community. So that's my vision.
I want to raise a possible legal issue. You mentioned you were on the Pension Board of North Miami Beach, and you are applying for the Comprehensive Planning Advisory Board. And this is going to be a question for Jim Beadle, if you, if we want to appoint you to the Comprehensive Planning Board. The possible issue is dual office holding. And I don't know if that applies in this case, since they're two separate cities. Well, I would want that opinion from another lawyer, because you can get in trouble with that. So.
I understand.
Thank you. Who would like to go next?
Hi, Linda.
Hi.
First of all, thank you for volunteering. And just so you know, these meetings are once a month on Monday nights, and I believe it's the first or second Monday of the, of the month. So it is a fourth?
Third.
We've covered them all right now. It's not a myth. We, oh, yes.
It's the, it's the third.
The fourth.
It's the third, fourth. It's the fourth Monday.
Fourth.
CPAB. It's the fourth Monday.
Are you trying to get me not to show up?
No, we're looking real shy.
We know what's going on, too. But anyway, what's your vision for, I mean, I know where you live. What's your vision for A-1A and the beach going down the road?
That's a, that's, I would like to see underground wiring. I would like to see, one of the initiatives that the city had was planting more greenery. I would, I would like to see a renewal of the businesses without the bright blue and the purple, and, in other words, some plan that included a perspective of what really fits in the city, and fits in, and I mean, in the decor, as well as the fact of the, how high it is or how low it is. I would like to see us limit and keep the roadside stands away. I don't really like to see a bunch of people selling hats, or hot dogs, or whatever. I think that we should keep that to a minimum. I don't think we need to do that. I would like to see the city grow in a very classy way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. You and I have had several conversations, and I'm glad you're here. Tremendous interview, really one of the finest interviews we've had here in a long time.
Thank you.
And I definitely appreciate it, and you have my support for the Comprehensive Planning Advisory Board.
Thank you.
Linda, I think you've answered all my questions. Glad you're here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda, thank you. And the way the-
I need to, I need to ask another question. Okay. In listening to you, you keep stressing businesses, and my question to you is, you had initially also indicated an interest in the Community Redevelopment Agency Advisory Committee, which does not have openings now. Would you have a preference for holding off and being appointed to that committee? Because that is their focus.
Not really. My initial reason that I came here was because I was interested, as a beachside resident, in the preservation of our quality of life on the beach. And a lot of the people that live in the community were approaching me with very varied ideas. Some were very erratic. And I wanted to find some common ground. And so I felt that there should be a way that the residents can fit in with the city that live in the A-1A area. And so I'm interested, because that's what I'm doing now. I just have experience to bring to the table so we could coexist. But I appreciate you asking. And I think I also need the experience of sitting in these meetings, and if you feel I'm better suited to, after listening to my input, that I'm better suited on another board, then I'd be happy to move to another board. I mean, you know, I'm not cemented to that idea, but, but I do think I need the experience.
Okay. Thank you.
Everybody, okay. Linda, thank you very much.
Question with regard to the dual office holding. Is that the consensus of this?
We're not even answering that question, I believe.
I'm just asking if it's the consensus to have the attorney write an opinion.
I would like to ask the attorney, since a question has been brought up.
Okay.
So that we don't have a problem, and we'll ask him at the meeting, at our council meeting.
That's fine.
Okay?
And it will not be a written opinion.
I just want to make sure that we, when we appoint someone, I think that's a good question to find out, and let's ask the attorney.
And the reason I mention it is because the definition of dual office holding is not as straightforward as normal people would think. It includes things that only the Florida Legislature could come up with.
Well, let's make sure we get that to Jim. And Linda, the way it works, as explained, is it's an agenda item. It's near the end, and we'll make a vote. If you'd like to stay through the process, fine. If not, um-
No, because if you turn me down, I'll be embarrassed.
Lenora will definitely get ahold of you. And thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Any further comments on the board?
Thanks, Linda.
Here are none. This meeting is adjourned, and we will start the council meeting in approximately five minutes.
Good seeing you again.
Thank you very, very much.
Hey, thanks for coming out.
Thanks, Linda.
Matt can tell we're going to start.
That's from the mayor.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting, the city of Satellite Beach, October 2nd, 2013, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join Vice Mayor Brymer for a moment of silence and the pledge.
Everybody would stand for a moment of silence, please? If you'd join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which has changed, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Before we get to citizens' comments, I'd like to bring something up. I would appreciate it if all cell phones remain off during the council meeting, please. Electronics devices buzzing and so forth, I would please like that, limited. It's, I like to show courtesy to all the people in this room. And it's a small room, which I like, because we got a lot of one-on-one here, but also the side chatter gets loud back there. I don't always hear it this far up, but if you could please refrain from it and give courtesy to your neighbors around you, and you will always have an opportunity to speak here. So I would appreciate that. And please, no cell phones ringing. Thank you very much. Sorry I had to say it, but it's getting pretty noisy. Moving on to agenda item number three, citizens' comments. Comments on non-agenda items. The floor is open. Here are none. Bring it back to council, and moving on to agenda item number four, city council comments. Who would like, Councilwoman Dean, would you like to start?
Sure. I did attend the crack meeting. Also, we just discussed dual office holding. I do have an issue with dual office holding. Jim and Courtney, I approached you in April about dual office holding with respect to the police and fire pension board, members also serving on the general pension board. Never really got a definitive answer with respect to that. So while we're talking about dual office holding, I would like to know if that's also a dual office, which I do believe that may be a dual office holding position and a constitutional violation. So I would like a legal opinion as to whether or not that constitutes dual office holding. I did get the opportunity to read the full verbatim transcripts of the Board of Adjustment meeting from last week, or actually, almost a month ago. And I have to tell you, I'm very disappointed in the process. When I read the transcripts, there were at least four or five sidebars of the board members. And when questioned about what they were discussing, they said the code. So, you know, the Board of Adjustment and the Code Enforcement Board are quasi-judicial boards. I think it's very inappropriate. It was almost, when you read the verbatim transcripts, like they were violating the sunshine law right at the meeting. And so I know the meeting did get out of hand, but rightfully so, I think. Had I seen that board members discussing amongst themselves the code, I would be upset as well. I think the boards have become an issue. I think the boards need to be educated on quasi-judicial procedures, the legislation, and the process that needs to be followed when these, when these boards do have meetings. One other thing, on my way home from work today, I was coming- One other thing, on my way home from work today, I was coming over Pioneer Causeway at 5:00. And in front of me was a black charger. And I didn't bring this up to you because I had to get home and get the kids ready and get here. But it was a police officer from Satellite Beach. And I followed them and they were clocking 70 miles an hour. Perception is everything. I supported the take-home vehicle policy, but I just want to say, and I'm not advising how to administer the city, but perception is everything. And the car number, tag number is 274740. And it was exactly at 5:00. So, you know, if we're going to use these take-home policies, I personally would like to see them abide by the law when they're outside the city. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Who else? Who's next? Mark?
I've had the opportunity to present our communities for a lifetime initiative to the city of Cocoa Beach last Tuesday, February 24th. Got to talk about our fall prevention initiative and a lot of the work that we've done in the city to the community of Cocoa Beach at one of their senior fests that they had there. So just slowly getting the word out of the work that we're doing here in the city and still getting very positive response. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
I want to remind everyone of the council policies and procedures that say if there is any complaint to be made about any city employee, it will be taken to the city manager. It will not be brought to this council before all other means to resolve the issue have been exhausted.
Anything?
I have nothing else.
Okay. Tony?
On the 20th of September, I attended the Florida League of Cities Legislative Committee meetings up in Jacksonville along with the city manager and the mayor. And I sit on the Transportation and Intergovernmental Committee. Basically, what these committees do, and there are five committees that the League of Cities has, and they look at what the projected agenda of the municipalities in Florida should be for these respective committees for the next upcoming legislative session. So we come up with basically what our priorities are for any bills that need to be filed at the legislature for different things that affect cities. And I know Councilwoman Gatz sits on the Brevard County TPO. So I've given her my packet that I came home with because it's probably information that she would be able to use and, and-
No, I want a South Beaches Coalition.
South Beaches Coalition, okay.
Harper has the seat representative on the TPO, yeah, for the coalition.
Well, I hope you'll get to look at it and-
I will.
... view it. Also, on the 21st, I participated in the first annual Satellite Beach 5K Walk and Run, which, you know, I have to give kudos to the city recreation department. Carrie and our staff did a great job of putting this stuff together. It was done with the running zone. There were about 120 some odd people that were in the walk along with the city manager. And the mayor actually was out there walking, too. So we had a good turnout and it was great. And the only other thing is I was at the meeting last night for the code meeting also.
Very much. Yes, I was at the 5K run. Courtney and I made it. So I helped her make sure she got there with her young child in the stroller. But it was great. And I know it was very fun. It was a good community day out there. And it was nice to see all the people that did participate in it. And Carrie did it again a fabulous job. It was a lot of fun. Wish you were there. I also was at the Florida League of Cities in Jacksonville. The board that I sit on is the environment and water. And very interesting things happening in that. Again, one of the big issues in the state of Flor- Florida, obviously, is our aquifer and the springs. And some of the data on the springs are very interesting, how they're not producing the volume of water that they once did. So that's a major issue for this committee. The other big issue, which I was very glad to see, is Lake Okeechobee, the runoff and the Indian River Lagoon system. And that was my big push, is to make sure that the Indian River is in there for the water quality. And so we're working on it. We have two more meetings. One's in Orlando in October, I believe, the 18th, and then in November. And what's good about this, and I know we had a lot of fish kill in the canals here and so forth. If anybody saw, I believe, Sunday, there was a huge thing on the national news. A friend of mine called me from a little town called Willow Creek, Montana, and called me that it was on out there.
NBC.
NBC had a, a really nice thing about, you know, the hands across the lagoon and so forth, and what's going on. It's a hot item. And I tell everyone, get involved in it. It's an election year. It's a hot item. Environmentally, it's important. And it's really hot right now. People are showing a lot of interest in it. So that's one thing. I also attended the Space Coast League of Cities. Had a great opportunity to spend some time with the new general and quite the lady. And also, we have an appointment with her in November that we are going to discuss the 100 acres and a few other items with her to see what we can work together on. And that's all I have. Any other comments from council?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number four, city attorneys' report.
I don't have anything, other than I'll have something in response to Cheryl's issue and the other dual office holding issue that came up earlier this evening with Courtney tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thank you. City managers' report. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to remind everyone that the 55-plus club always has a great list of activities for our 55-plus community members. That club has 600 members and there's always something going on. So if you have an interest in joining that club or attending one of those activities, you can contact Marty Hensley. And we have that phone number and contact in our recreation brochure as well as with my department, or with City Hall. I wanted to remind everyone as well is that the PAL Garage and Bike Sales, October 4th and 5th, that is going to be at the teen zone from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM each day. And my favorite, the PAL Lions Club Pancake Breakfast, that will be on October 13th from 7:00 AM until 1:00 PM. Do you need tickets for that event? And those can be purchased at the PAL office, the community center, or the, from any Lions Club member. Speaking of the pancake breakfast, the Lions Club did provide a pancake breakfast at our annual 5K flag run event. That is the, my favorite part of that. The mayor and I did walk and sometimes run that event together. We have a very similar taste in exercise, I can tell. We did, they, we did have 120 runners and 50 volunteers. Over 50 volunteers helped us with that event. And if, probably the most prominent group of volunteers was the ROTC, Satellite High School ROTC members, who cheered us on through that entire event. And if you saw the signs and everything, you, they were very memorable. A very good, energetic group of kids. And you could tell that they were ROTC members when the anthem came on during the event. And they all stood at attention. It was, it was pretty neat. So we thank our recreation department for that successful event. They did a great job. And hopefully, we will continue that event for a long time coming. The Affordable Care Act, we've heard a lot about it on the news, but it actually is implementing right now. We had a deadline of October 1st to notify all of our employees concerning the health insurance marketplace. We have met that deadline. We've met all of our Affordable Care Act requirements. So I just wanted to let council know that we are in compliance with all of those requirements. We have received our final flood determination from the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA. The letter's in your packet and basically indicates that we did not receive any appeals and that the flood hazard determinations are considered final. The next action you'll be seeing from the city, city staff will be presenting an ordinance to you, the floodplain management ordinance. We will be modeling that after the model ordinance, and that'll come to you prior to March of 2014. Will likely be in front of you before December. The Visiting Nurses Association will be offering flu shots at the DRS Community Center on October 3rd from 9:00 to 11:00. That visiting, the Visiting Nurses Association, their shots range from $25 to $35. They accept all kinds of insurance. They accept Medicare, Medicaid, TRICARE, and so on. The flyer is in the agenda packet. And you can call the DRS Center for more information. One concerning thing, our budget, with our budget, is the county commission and their budget hearing at the last minute, defunded the first responder program at the last, at their budget meeting. This first responder program is a, is about a $42,000 hit to our budget. They basically reimburse our, our city. When we get to emergency, a medical emergency first, we use all of our equipment and so on, and we, and we expend those, those expenses. And when the county, who is authorized by the state to transport, actually comes to transport the patient to the hospital, they'll turn around and bill that patient. So that patient, to make sure they're not paying twice, we get reimbursed for our expenses. So that program unfortunately was defunded. We're going back and forth with the county now. So hopefully, we will get that refunded for this year and talk to them on, about how to resolve whatever issues they have. It's been difficult to get them on the phone. I'm sure they're probably dealing with other 19 upset cities right now. So, but we'll make sure that hopefully we'll get that funding back for this year. I think that will happen personally. And then fiscal year 15, we'll work from there. Senate Bill 50 was adopted by the state legislature. They now require comments, public comment for any proposition that is brought to city council, any local government, actually. It's funny how they regulate our public comments, but then they don't regulate their own public comments. But we are in compliance with that, with the exception, I believe, because we don't have sign-up cards. The way we do things, we just sign up for the actual item. And because in my reports, I'll, I'll put sometimes action items in my report. From now on, we really do need to open up my report if we have an action item for public comment. So that way, we're not outside of that bill. We will also make sure that all the boards are aware of this legislation. They need to be in compliance as well. So we will be talking with them and reviewing their procedures and processes and bylaws and make sure that they understand that if there's a proposition that's not ministerial nature, they do need to open that up for public comment. Our fire department, I, this is a fall schedule for our fire department. This is a busy time for them. They get invited to a lot of the schools. They come and they do a lot of education with our community and a lot of community events. I wanted to just highlight the things that they end up doing during this period of time. So when you see the fire trucks at various locations throughout the city, that's what they're doing. They were next door today at one of the churches. And, you know, I always get comments from citizens when I'm walking out, like, what's the fire department doing there? Is everything okay? So they'll be at various locations and everything is okay. They're just educating our community about what they do. I do have one action item. We are requesting council approve the municipal funding request from Keepa Var Beautiful in the amount of $1,000. If you review the projects they have done in our community, you can tell that that's well worth what we get from their group. I think they calculated they spend approximately around $10,000 in our community in the past year. So we are requesting that we, council approve that funding and we'll go ahead and send out that check if that's your desire. That's all I have.
Thank you. Before we get to that action, action item that I open up for public discussion, on your item number five-
Yes, sir.
Like, we've been in contact almost every day. I talked to Mary Bowman on this, Commissioner Lynn, Aunt Louis, excuse me. She said right now, they are going to fund half of it. You know, we're good for six months of it, as of this point. And she felt fairly strong that they would come to some agreement on the balance.
The first responder service?
Yes. But that she said that right now, that half of it was going to be, she could fairly certain to say would be funded. Just to let you know that.
And Mayor, I just wanted to also comment. I mean, I am drafting a letter to the county manager, basically asking them, you know, if you're not going to fund this program, we want to know with data how our citizens won't be charged twice for these services. That's, that's my concern. And so that, that's what we'll be asking the county to approve to us.
You know, I'd also like them, when they're doing this, to at least give us some notification.
Yeah.
Since we, in May, we signed an agreement for this coming year, and it lasted two months.
Yeah, actually, the, the agreement was for the preceding year. But the, this program has been in, for 10 years now?
Yeah.
And I understand that, that every year, they, you know, they kind of have to re-educate commissioners and so on on why we do that program. So it's always questioned. But I've never seen the county redo their rates that they charge and things like that. And until they do that, I don't see how they could not fund this program. So we'll, we'll get to the bottom of it.
Courtney, just one question. So the part that they are balking on funding is everything that our EMS provides up to the time of transport. Is that correct?
That's correct. So we get, we get reimbursed, basically.
Okay. So that, and what they're proposing is stop that completely?
Right.
Okay.
So if we, if we, basically, it offsets our fire department's costs. So we, it goes into our general fund, which funds our, our fire department. So if we did not have that funding, we'd have to take it somewhere, from somewhere else or increase the amount of it.
Okay. I do understand your concerns for billing, because once, like, a better word, a band-aid is on there, then it can be billed.
Right. So in, in our city, the, the citizen pays the taxes to our fire department to have that service. And then when they get in the ambulance, they pay again to Brevard County for the same thing.
Yeah, for the transport.
So without that reimbursement, they're paying twice.
You know, the other thing we're missing here, too, is, you know, we have A-1A, which, if there's accidents on A-1A and the people that are in the accident kind of live in the city, our responders are the first ones there. And we have no way of getting that money back.
Right.
So, I mean, this program is instrumental to the city, not only our city, but any other city that has a major artery running through it. And the county has the ability of billing this stuff. This needs to stay in place. And I think somewhere in your letter, you need to indicate that scenario.
Well, that also, the other scenario would be for them to give us the right to transport. And they have that ability. They could give us the right to transport.
And again, one of the questions I brought up to Courtney was, if they're billing now and they continue billing and don't provide the service, they bailed Medicare and so forth, how can they build for a service they didn't provide? So I, I know Courtney's-
That was the concern, yeah. I mean, that's, that's the questions we're posing and we're not really getting any answers yet. So, you know, I know they're being bombarded right now, so I'm trying to be patient. But, you know, they're, they're going to have to come up with an answer sooner.
Yeah, I, I do think we want to look at everything before we look at our own transport, because that's a whole different ballgame. That's huge. So.
Before we move on-
Can I ask, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The same item, number five. I actually watched that county commission meeting. It's very unfortunate. We budgeted that money for, into our budget, and at the last minute, it, it was just completely cut. I assume this issue is going to be an agenda item at the county commission level sometime in the near future, because I'm sure all the other municipalities are balking about it.
They, we all are. I've probably talked to a number of city managers, you know, about what they're talking about. And from what I understand, it might go on the next agenda item so that they can put funding back.
Will you keep us posted, please, on the meeting?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Concerning the action item question, where is the $1,000 coming from?
We have that money in the Support Services budget.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to put forth $1,000 into Keepa Var Beautiful for the next year. I have a motion by Councilman Montanero. I have a second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Before we take a vote, I'll open it up for public comment, since this is an action item. Here are none back to council. Any discussion, further discussion from council? Here are none. Lenora?
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gatz?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion carries five, nothing. Thank you. Any further questions for the city manager? Here are none. Moving on to agenda item number seven. Discuss, take action on the site plan review, Satellite Beach United Methodist Church, 450 Lee. John?
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're here to discuss and take action on a two-phase site plan for the Satellite Beach United Methodist Church located at 450 Lee Avenue. Phase one will consist of a 3,827-foot addition to their fellowship hall. And it's, anticipated to be completed within two years. However, it's, it's driven by donations, a lot of it. The church is very fortunate that they, their church is paid off. And so that's basically their, their mindset is to pay as they go. And so they've, they're moving forward cautiously. So again, they're, they're looking to have it completed within two years of site plan approval with three one-year extensions, just to make sure that they got their bases covered. And they, they have the revenue coming in to complete that. Phase two will be a 3,475-foot new addition. And that's going to be for the youth and preschool activities. They're requesting three year, I'm sorry, five years to complete that project from site plan approval. And again, three one-year extensions. site plan approval, and again, three one-year extensions. Both of those would, the extensions would be approved by the building official, where essentially, they come in to me and they update me where they're at to make sure that this project is still active and moving forward. So we'll look at it on annually. The entire project, both phases, will be closed out within eight years, so that's the time certain on the site plan. The applicants, they're aware of the fact that whatever code is in, building codes that are in force at the time of building permit application, that is what they have to follow. So the site plan essentially is more about the civil, you know, the footprint of it. Tonight, I have Dr., Senior Pastor Dr. Joe Gerst here, and also the project facilitator in the, if you have any questions for him.
Thank you very, very much. Council questions?
I have a question. It's really for Courtney. I'm a little bewildered why we're reviewing such a small site plan. Do we not just adopt a site plan process amendment in our code so that a lot of these things were streamlined? I mean, it looks to me like this, these folks have been in this process since June of 2012.
First up, it's by no means a small site plan. This is a very large project, and it's a project that would not be exempted by the changes that were made to the minor site plan approval process.
What's the threshold? Just curious.
I think it was like 2,500 square feet. It really wasn't much. It was intended for small additions. For instance, they were exempt on the, they basically had two buildings, and they were enclosing a breezeway. Once they enclosed that breezeway, it became increasing gross floor area. So that particular project they did prior to the site plan, that one was fast-tracked through because it did meet those exemptions.
This is 3,475 foot.
Yeah, like 60 by 60.
You got two of them, and that's only half of it.
Right. So that's one phase.
Yeah.
Right, you have six, seven, about 7,500 square feet.
First phase is 3,827 square feet. So you're looking at over 6,000 square feet.
Just so, with some substantial renovations that include new building, existing buildings. It's been almost a year in design, going back and forth with their structural engineers and their architects, not to mention going through all our various boards and staffs. So this is a fairly substantial project here.
Further questions?
Yeah, yes. I think we still probably need to look at that site plan issue. I mean, I think that, based on that acreage, we should have administrative review and not vet these folks through this kind of process. I think it's, it's not fair to the applicant, it's not fair to the community, because it delays projects, and perhaps we need to look at that again, because I actually consider this 6,000 square feet a small project for a property that's existing and already built out.
Thank you. Question? Do, this obviously met all...
No, that's correct. It's been approved by city engineer, internal staff, police, fire, beautification board, planning zoning board, you know, it's been through the mill.
Great, thank you very much.
The only thing I have is, do we need something in writing about the codes? Because I know the ICC is looking at, by the time this project could come to fruition, some parts of it, the ICC will be the code and not the Florida building code. I know there's talk about what the ICC and how it's going to impact the Florida building code, and I think 2016 is the year that we could see some changes. So I would just like to make sure we have something that basically says, whatever the codes are at that point in time, are what we're going to adhere by. Because right now, the Florida building code is what we go by.
Well, that's, it's actually Florida law, you know, Florida building code, unlike some states where they have to adopt the, their code. We don't have to adopt it. It's mandated. So we could not issue a building permit and not apply the current code to that.
Okay. I'm fine.
Questions? Make a motion? Yes, and then I'll open it up for public.
I move that we approve site plan, PZ number 3-12, for Satellite Beach United Methodist Church at 450 Lee Avenue, along with a three-year extension in one-year increments for each phase of the project, the increments to be granted at the building official's discretion.
Second. I can have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Any further discussion from council?
And I misspoke. I should say with the extensions to be granted, rather than the increments to be granted at the building official's discretion.
I will amend my second.
Thank you. At this time, open up for public comment. Here and none, bring it back to council. Council, any further discussion?
Beautiful, beautiful project, yes. I have, I have one, there were a couple of things in here. David King had one, the St. John's River Water Management District, the permit, has that?
The permit's been applied for. The, once, we cannot hold up, and in this, again, I believe there's some statutory language to this, we can't hold up the site plan process, some because they haven't...
It has been applied for.
It's been applied for. I've included in your template there the actual permit number. Before they can break ground, we would have to see that actual approval from St. John's Church.
Okay, thank you. Any further comment from council? Lenore?
Councilwoman Zeta?
Yes, and good luck.
Mr. Rambach?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Goff?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Community, thank you. Moving on to agenda eight, discuss, take action on a request from Pastor Dr. Joe of Satellite Beach United Methodist Church for permission to host four RVs from the Nomads for a three-week period for the purpose of church improvements.
Okay, let me add to that. Approximately 50% of the volunteers' time, and they work six to eight hours a day, four days a week. They got some great work ethic, but 50% of their time is in the community. They're reaching out to the building departments, to the police department, to fire departments, and they're looking, and I'm sure Dr. Joe will be asking you this question as well, is they're looking for people to help. And, you know, building ramps, cementing fences, mowing grass, and I'm not talking about ignoring code enforcement issues, I'm talking about people that truly need help. They will qualify them if we can, if we have names, give it to them, and they will work that through the process. These, this is the second time they've been down here. They typically come down the weekend, right after Thanksgiving, they stay for three weeks. It's always been a very positive experience, both from the city level and from the residents. So it's just a tremendous thing that we've had a lot of success with.
Thank you very much. Council comments?
Yeah, do you tie them in with the Neighbor Helping Neighbor program to, we're talking about volunteers and...
We have pulled the information from Neighbor Helping Neighbor. So we'll make sure that between the departments that typically try to find people, we'll also make, reach out to Neighbor Helping Neighbor and also the 60, 55...
55 plus.
55 plus.
I move to approve three weeks of temporary RV housing for church volunteers at 450 Lee Avenue.
Second. A motion by Councilwoman Gott, a second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Still open for council comments.
John's right. I remember this from before. It went really, really well, so I'm glad this is going on again. I think it's a great thing.
Actually, this started at the church down on Cassia years ago, and it's progressed to where you are now, and it's a great program. Thank you.
Thank you. Quick question. John did say something. I would like to make a comment.
Please.
Last year, you said that you would give me names. I got one. So I want you to look at your neighbors, okay? The elderly in particular, those that are, we've got lots of single parents here, and I know Rob calls me and says, "We need this fixed," and he's done it through the year. We try to help out with that. But look at your neighbors and tell us. I know the fire department does it. We're going to build a ramp this year. We've got a couple of fences. And the reason I bring it up is, last year, when I said something here, one of the ladies sitting behind me here called up and said, "I was at city council the other day. Do you really kind of..." And so they asked. So I would say to the folks in the city that are here, if you have neighbors or friends that need something, we started a list of projects to try to do to help those in the community around us. And that's really the reason that, they do some stuff around the church, but honestly, they do stuff around the church to fill in what we can't find in the community. So I don't want them to stand around and do nothing. But thank you all for the opportunity to serve the community.
Thank you very, very much.
For the record, did you give us your name?
My name is, oh, I'm sorry. My name is Dr. Joe Gerst, Satellite Beach United Methodist Church pastor.
Thank you very, very much. Any further comments from council? Here and none, open up for public comment on this agenda item.
Just to let you know, when they were here last year, they were looking for things to do, so I found some painting for them. They painted the breezeway in city hall, so very appreciative of them, and if they need some more work, we can find something for them.
Thanks, Alan. Appreciate it very much. Any further public comment? Yes, Steve.
Yeah, we have a whole list. Seriously.
Steve Hedley, resident. Just to echo, these guys are my neighbors. I mean, literally, they live a block away from me. The Nomads group, they're invisible, in the sense of, they don't add an impact to the congestion, to the noise, anything that would be detrimental. It's a great group, it's a great function. I work with them, a different group somewhere else, but this is a good thing. And just to let you know, from a citizen's standpoint, someone who's close by, it's a good thing.
Thank you very much. Further public comment? Here and back to council. Further comments from council?
Just a question for Joe.
Yes.
I've been involved quite a bit with Aging Matters in Brevard. It used to be the Community Services Council.
Yes.
They do a lot of grabbar installation and ramps and that sort of thing. Have you guys ever looked at partnering with that organization?
The difficulty we've found with partnering is that we're only here for three weeks, and most of them have long, ongoing. I've contacted them and said, "If you've got a project, if you'll give it to me." But most of them don't work on timeframes, and that's the unfortunate thing, is Nomads come across the United States when it's good to be there. And November to February is good to be in Florida, not July and August. So, but we have, I've contacted those, sort of members of our church that are parts of those different organizations.
You do know about the organization, yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I needed. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Further comments? Here and none. Lenore?
Councilwoman Zeta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Finales?
Yes, motion carries, five, nothing. And thank you very, very much for your help in our community.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Moving on to agenda number nine, discuss, take action on the service order with ADP Inc. for payroll, time and attendance, and HRIS services. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to, Andy, did you want to come up? Basically, what we are asking for is an approval of a service order to contract services with APD Inc. to outsource our payroll function in the city. And this would basically reduce our need for an accountant position in the future. It will also reduce our need to invest heavily in our finance software, as moving this to this software, moving this function to this software will solve a lot of our streamlining needs in the future. Basically, this would, it would have a one-time fee of $17,900 to implement the new software. Basically, that's the upfront cost to provide, creating the, you know, making the software applicable to the city itself and uploading all the data. And then we would also have an annual fee of $39,468. This is much lower than an accountant position, which would be approximately $55,000, including benefits. And then also, we would have, you know, another ongoing, long-term payroll function or someone on the payroll. And in this case, if it does not work out with ADP, we can eliminate the contract within a year and then move on to, you know, doing something different. So this is what we're recommending to streamline our processes. We're trying to also get some of the employees' lives out of the finance department, quite frankly, and making an electronic system that they can access even from home. It's more convenient for them, it's more convenient for us. So this would be the next step in streamlining our processes and procedures in city hall. Andy probably can be a little bit more specific about some of the things that this will do for us, if you have very specific questions.
Thank you. Council comments?
Hallelujah. I brought this up a year and a half ago, and it was an agenda item, specifically ADP, and shot down. So I'm glad it's going to hopefully happen, and you're going to love it. It's going to make life a lot easier.
Thank you. Other council comments?
Yeah. Courtney, we're being asked to include in the motion an annual amount of $39,468. When I look at the investment summary, the figure is $39,268. What is the, what's the deal?
The annual investment of $39,268. Same?
Yeah, on this sheet, right here, the investment, look at this. See where I am? Right there. It's 268.
Different figures.
Oh.
And it's 468 in what would be our motion.
Okay, that's a typo. It should be 268.
268?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, another question. The motion should also include the $17,900, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
The one time. Okay, and did I hear you mention another cost? That's our third cost, okay. And I'll move that we approve ADP Inc. for payroll, time and attendance, and human resource system, human resource information system services with an annual amount of $39,268 and a one, for the, $39,268 and a one-time fee of $17,900 to implement the new software.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro.
It was 268.45, if you want to make that part of the motion.
Do you need the pennies?
If we're going to be that specific, then yes, I would need the pennies.
Okay, it's towards the amount of $39,268.45.
I have a motion by, second by Councilman Montanaro. Further discussion from council? Here and none, bring it, open for public comment. Here and none, bring it back to council. Lenore?
Yes. Have fun with it.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Andy. Good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
For bringing it about. Appreciate it very much. Courtney, thank you. Moving on to agenda item number 10, discuss, provide direction to staff on signed moratorium ordinance number 1058.
Thank you, Mayor. On October 17th, 2012, you approved ordinance 1058, that basically provides a one-year moratorium on the enforcement of certain prohibited temporary signs. That moratorium is expected to expire next month on October 17th, or this month, October 17th, 2013. Basically, the intent of the moratorium was to provide some temporary relief of current sign regulations to businesses within the commercial district. Unfortunately, for, in our opinion, it's going to take a long time for that to actually catch on, and so we really can't determine really the impact of that regulation yet. So to kind of find a medium ground, we were recommending another one-year moratorium to see if it would be, you know, another, if there would be some negative impacts before we did any recommendations on actually changing the ordinance for now. So that's what we're recommending, is to extend the moratorium for one year, and we can bring back an ordinance that says that, if that's what you desire.
Thank you. Comment from council?
Move to extend the signed moratorium one additional year without changes.
Second.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Move to extend the signed moratorium one additional year without changes.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, and I have a second by Councilman Montanaro. Discussion from council?
Yep. Originally, I was opposed to the moratorium. I kind of calculated where these signs would go, and it expected this visual clutter, but it really didn't turn out to be that way at all. I think the property owners are cognizant of their properties, and really have done a good job with it, so I'm gonna support it.
Any further comments from council? Here are none, open up for public comment on Agenda item number 10.
What this is missing is still the free speech and electionary initiative. It was supposed to be brought up. I mean, when I talked to you, we both thought it was. It needs to come back before we get into an election cycle. Okay?
We do have it. That's what we're working on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public comment on Agenda item number 10 is still open. Here are no further comment. Back to council. Any further discussion? Here are none. Lenore?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes, five nothing. Moving on to Agenda item number 11, discuss, propose, recommended changes to council policy and procedures. This was brought by Councilwoman Gott, so I will let her lead this.
Okay. The changes that I'm proposing are underlined and highlighted in yellow, but I will point them out. First of all, in the table of contents, there will be addition of another section, another paragraph subsection under Section 1 General Provisions, and that would be regarding citizen requests to increase staff workload. And then, if we just, we'll move through this page by page. That's on page one. On page two, the changes would be under city boards and committees, and a second provision is added regarding attendance, and that deals with regular attendance shall be required for board committee members, including alternate members, and attendance shall be recorded at each meeting. Irregular attendance may be cause for removal by council from boards, committees, and I deliberately put the word "may" in because some people get sick, and that's an excused absence, and so we don't need to get into that kind of detail, but we would have the authority to remove folks for lack of attendance under this provision.
Susan, do we want to handle this, the council, per each of your items?
I would like to do that.
Or wait till you're done with all of them, then go back? Since you're the presenter of this, Al, would you like it to be handled?
I'd rather just go through it, and then people can decide if they're.
At the time, okay, so for right now, we'll open it up?
No, no, just go through it, and then for those who want to, yeah.
And then we'll take it?
I'd like to make a motion on each highlighted area, so that we talk about each one.
We can. What I was talking about here is letting her.
Right, go through it, but then go back over.
Go back over each individual one. That's how she would like to present it. Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay, and then carrying the idea of attendance through regarding appointments, it's under Section C. 5, it says that attendance records shall be considered in reappointments. And then, a new section or provision on controlling meetings was added as item number seven. Upon election, each board or committee chair shall be advised by the city manager of the chair's responsibility and methods to control misconduct during meetings. A uniformed police officer shall be assigned to meetings which are anticipated to be contentious, and in addition, C-Section 4, D. 10 below, which also deals with additional misconduct issues. These, we have of late seen some situations where it appears that certain audience members think that they are attending a Jerry Springer meeting, or show, and these are actually business meetings of our city, and they need to be conducted with professionalism and some business demeanor. And so, this is simply a reminder that we intend to enforce that. The next page, page three, is an additional item added, Section D. Citizen requests to increase staff workload, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, and said that I would be including this. Any requests for additional nonessential, and I want to change that comma to the word "or", so any requests for additional nonessential or non-emergency work or services shall be accommodated as city staffing reasonably permits. Staff shall not be expected to work beyond normal duty hours to accommodate such new demands. And then, under the new, it was D., it's now Section E. Adoption and Amendment of Policies and Procedures, as I was going through my process of trying to amend these items in Paragraph 2 jumped out at me. And I'm noticing some line-throughs, strike-throughs on some of these numbering, and that's just this word program that is carrying over from the strike-throughs further on, so don't worry about those. But the way the provision is now, if you want to amend any of these, you have to submit a written request, and that includes council members. Well, that's silly. If a council member makes a request at a meeting, they shouldn't also have to then request it in writing, so I'm striking the word "written", and I'm striking the second sentence, voting on the proposed amendment shall not occur at the meeting at which the amendment is proposed. We vote on everything else at the meetings at which we discuss them. I think that's an additional step that's just simply nonproductive. So then, we go over to page four, and under D., council attire, the following attire shall be deemed appropriate for regular and special council meetings. The first one is casual attire from April through September, and we just had the experience where it is still too hot for suits and ties, so I added the language "from April through September, or through October if necessitated by hot weather", and then that gives the license to do that as we see fit. Then, we go over to page six. And if you will look at the handout that you received, an additional sentence has been added to what was already there. Oh, under Paragraph A, I'm in Section 4, citizens' right to be heard by city council, A, who shall be heard, Paragraph 1. Just for clarification, I added, but chair may have them wait until, I inserted, "so like each residence and taxpayers have been heard", just for clarification. And then, we go to Paragraph B, speakers' documentation for council. On that second paragraph, sentence, it started "to be considered at the next council meeting, the documentation, so forth", that's not really what we had been intending to say, so I changed "to be considered at", changed those words to "for distribution prior to the next council meeting", if someone wants to have something distributed, then the rest of that remains the same. We go to an additional sentence at the end of Paragraph B, and again, this is something that has arisen by some conduct from audience members demanding things that there really should be no expectation of, and so I've added the sentence, "there shall be no requirement or expectation that copies of materials provided by speakers shall also be provided to audience members at any meeting of the council or any city board or committee." And those are the proposed changes.
Okay, thank you. Let's go back then, and start with page two, number two, attendance, is that?
Yep.
Okay, who would like to, any comments from that?
I'll make a motion to accept Section 1, city boards, number two, attendance.
May I make a suggestion that we just get one motion on the whole thing?
No, no, I would like to go through each one, because I have comments.
I understand that, Ms. Dean.
I think what I would like to see is go through them, see what changes if we agree, and then vote on it.
As a whole.
As a whole.
Okay.
And we can change, we can have consensus, and then at the end, because we're gonna have to open up for public comment also.
I'll withdraw my second. I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, so attendance. Councilwoman Dean, you have a question on attendance?
Actually, I have some comments. I agree that attendance is an issue, and it does need to be recorded at each meeting, but in our land development regulations, we specify what the attendance requirements are for the Board of Adjustment in Section 30-203. It talks about what the requirements are. I think irregular is very subjective, and again, the land development regulations under Board of Adjustment explain clearly what the attendance requirements are. I didn't print it, but I think you can only miss two consecutive meetings without an excuseal by the chair. Code enforcement, you can only miss two to three consecutive meetings without approval by the chair, or you're dismissed. That's the end of the subject, so it can't be subjective. And also, I would think that if we are gonna be subjective, then we need to change the land development regulations. And also, it goes even further, and I didn't write down the code number, the land development regulation numbers, when you talk about the pension boards, it's the pension board that can remove members. We can't do that. So, there's some things that need to be thought about before we just approve number two. Mr. Beadle, that's probably a legal issue for you, since it is codified on what the attendance requirements are, if we can just put something of subjective in our council policies and procedures.
Mr. Maryland, respond to that. This is not a legal issue, it's a semantic issue. This was deliberately worded very generally with the word "may", because this does not conflict with anything that's in any code, and obviously, a code is going to take precedent over this, but this is just a general notice of what is expected, and gives the council authority to remove for lack of attendance, absent any other provision in the code or someplace else.
Well, I think we made a recommendation, I think we all, via consensus, to look at the boards and the attendance requirements, so I don't really think, I think it's premature to add this. We can always add it later, once we determine what the attendance requirements are. I think it's too subjective to be added in right now, as it is, and I saw it the other day, when a rec. board member wanted to come in quickly, there was a motion to dismiss her, but she had already withdrawn. So, I hate to see that happen to people that are on boards, or have already decided to come off boards. I just think it's too subjective. There's either attendance requirements or not attendance requirements.
But each board has attendance requirements that we are obligated to provide by, correct?
On certain boards, not all the boards.
Right. So, all we're saying here, I think, is irregular attendance may cause removal, we're just making it seem that you have to be there. I don't think it's saying that number.
I disagree. I don't think it's really an issue.
All right. Any further comment on that? Moving on to appointments. Number five, attendance record shall be considered in reappointments. Is that?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Number seven, control of meetings. I have one thing here, and that's the last long sentence, "a uniformed police officer shall be assigned to meetings which are anticipated to be contentious." First off, who's making that decision? Is this, to me, I think that's the city manager's function.
It is. I agree.
There, and I don't know if it's wording, but I don't want to make us feel like we're trying to be contentious and having police officers at meetings towards the public. So, to me, I would like to see in discretion of the city manager, myself.
You can plug that in right after the word "assigned", but add by the discretion of the city manager.
But then, is it a policy for the council? I mean, why do we have to have, I mean, I believe that's a managerial issue, and it doesn't even need to be in there. Also, with respect to the members in the meetings, I think all members need to, and I requested this, actually, the first year I was in office, that all the board members, once a year, sit down with the city and the city attorney, and learn about the process and procedure. You know, there's quasi-judicial boards, there's advisory boards, and, you know, it should be done once a year.
Don't we do that when a member is appointed to that board, if it's a quasi-judicial?
No, and we were actually speaking about that, to where we were establishing a process of staff and attorney meeting with new board members when they come on. We were also speaking, I spoke in the gym, about irregular attendance at Board of Adjustment.
I think it's important to educate, especially.
Because we have to remember they're volunteers.
Yes.
Some of the boards don't regularly meet, so it's hard for them to, you know, it's not like council, where you meet, you know, you guys are on it, and it's a part of your daily life, where you're a volunteer board, and sometimes you don't meet, you know, for three months. It's hard to have that ingrained in your head, so it's better to, so we're talking about that among staff, and how to tighten that up.
But like I was saying, I think seven, it's really a managerial issue. It doesn't even need to be in our policies and procedures. It's up to Courtney to decide how she wants to handle it. There's some of my recommendations. It's really, it doesn't need to be in there at all.
Well, I think that after the last Board of Adjustment meeting, I think it's very clear it needs to be in there.
I'm not sure what it has to do with policy and procedure of the city council, but I'm not gonna support that.
I don't have a problem with it being in there, but I like the insertion that Mark came up with by, at the discretion of the city manager, being inserted in there. You know, I feel, I don't think our board members need to be subjected to rudeness or outbursts from the public that are just uncalled for, and I think if it's gonna have a uniformed police officer take care of it, then I think that's where we need to be.
Again, I think, you know, we've got to be careful on that, too, on what is being too boisterous to voice your ability to have that right. I mean, if someone has a loud voice like me, am I considered too boisterous?
You are if you're yelling from the back of the room.
I understand, but I think that is how the meeting is controlled, more than it is anything else. And, you know, I would just like to see, again, the city manager in there, if the city manager feels that needs to be, and I don't want to dictate to a board or anything that, we've got to have a police officer here.
Okay, I'm inserting at the beginning of that sentence, "at the discretion of the city manager, a uniformed police officer shall be assigned."
Yes, okay. Okay, moving on, page three, citizens' requests, request, excuse me, to increase staff workload. Comment?
Again, I think this is a managerial, city manager issue. First of all, citizens should be coming through city council to go to the city manager. I assume, Courtney, is there a specific incident where there's been undue workload because of a citizen?
I think there's been a number of instances where, when there seems to be an expectation of some citizens of what we should be doing, which isn't our normal way of doing things. So, we get a lot of requests that are outside of what we do. That's probably the most that I get at the council meetings, are requests to do things that are outside of what we normally do.
Such as?
Such as placing all the board meeting agendas on the web. And granted, now, there's many times where, you know, to a lot of people, that might seem simple, but when you have a lot of simple things pile up, that becomes a big thing, and that's where we're at with the clerk's office right now. So, in that sense, yes, I would say that when we get asked those things, or, you know, we need copies for everyone, we need to have it on the web when I have extras. Sometimes, we have changes that are made to an ordinance at the last minute, and we have to have that on the web, and there's an expectation that that's supposed to be done right before the meeting, and sometimes we can't get that done. So, those are some of the things that we're getting from citizens at the meeting that is not a policy of ours, it's not a managerial, it's not managerially commonplace, but for some reason, there's an expectation that we're supposed to do that.
I find that interesting, because when you go to any other municipality, it's all web-based, and boom, the agenda is there, the minutes are there, the meetings are there. And we're talking about technology, and we just approved ADP and some other things to bring us into 2013. I personally, I think this stuff should be automatically put on the web. I mean, I would rather, if I were a citizen, I'd rather click on it, use my own paper than have to come in and ask for you guys to take the time to print it.
We would love to have everything on the web. I mean, we're not disagreeing with that it shouldn't be on the web. What I'm trying to say is that, right now, they have a lot of work, and sometimes Lenore puts all these things on the web on Saturdays, Friday nights, Thursday nights. I mean, so what I'm trying to say is, it's not easy for her to just add something to her workload at this point.
So, what you're saying, with the staffing that we have right now in the, in the City Hall here, that we're limited, excuse me, thank you, that we're limited to the time they have to do things that quickly. Not that we're not doing them, it's just the time that it takes to get everything all the time.
And we will always, yeah, and we will always try to do all of that, because we want to do it. But I think what everybody has to be mindful, too, is that the City Hall staff particularly, this is the third city manager in a period of two years that they're dealing with, a brand-new budget's just been passed. You know, they're undergoing a lot of changes. The finance department's getting ready to automate everything that they're doing right now in payroll. So, a lot of, they're undergoing a lot of changes, and just asking them to keep doing more and more and more is very difficult at this point in time.
Well, I mean, I think that was a great explanation. I think the citizens would understand that to make it a policy, I think it's kind of absurd. I mean, I just think it's ridiculous.
Councilwoman Dean, I have a question, too, just on, you're saying that the citizens should go through council?
No, 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 I didn't realize it was about that issue. I thought if they were putting things on, in other words, it wasn't very clear, are they putting things on the agenda? But now, as she gave an example of, we, as a consensus, wanted the agendas online.
Yes.
So, that was an example that, but I don't really think it needs to be put in the policy. I mean, it's really up to the city manager to prioritize the work and the workload. policy. I mean, it's really up to the city manager to prioritize the work and the workload.
Thank you.
I want to speak to this. This is really one of my pet peeves. I have watched these city employees work themselves beyond any reasonable expectation, and they do it day in and day out. Those people work for us, and we have a responsibility to create reasonable working conditions for them. And it is absolutely appropriate to put the public on notice, that if you have other demands for them to do, we are always receptive, but you must expect that they will not jump through additional hoops, they will not be here working on weekends and nights to accommodate the latest demand, that they are entitled to a personal life, and it will be the policy of this council to ensure that they get it. I feel very strongly about that.
Thank you. I have, I have no problem with the first sentence. I think the second sentence, that should come under the discretion of our city manager. I don't know that it necessarily needs to be in there. But I'm, I'm all for the first sentence.
I'm just, sorry. I must have missed the boat on this one, because I thought the staff worked for the citizens. And I'm, I'm not being smart here. I get where you're going with it, and I'm not comparing, I understand the workload the staff is under, and you explained it very well, but they do work for the citizens and the taxpayers.
I think, thank you. My feeling is, second part, the department heads and the staff, yes, they do work for the citizens and so forth, but they're managed by, by our city charter, they're managed by the city manager. And I think the city manager needs to manage their department and their time, and it's up for the city manager to do that. And again, I don't think it's up for us to manage their time. My idea is, yes, they have to have a life, too. And I've been in city hall a lot lately, and things are getting done in a timely manner, and it seems like it's much calmer in there. But I think that's strictly a city manager's function, how she handles, and in this case, she handles the staff. Because that's the way our city charter says it.
But we set policy.
Understand. But I, again, in our city charter.
I'm very familiar with the city charter.
I know you are, you're very. But I'm, I think this is a city manager's function, personally. And I think our city manager would do an excellent job in making sure that the staff is treated right, and could get the job done when it needed. And again, and I'm sure if they had to work an extra overtime or something, it would be at the discretion of our city manager, so.
I am not shy in telling you when I think we're, we have a problem. I would, I think my staff wishes I would tell you no more. And that, I think, is really what we're encountering with the web request. But we are looking at outsourcing that, too. So, you know, there's, we have a lot of changes going on. So I, honestly, I just ask the community and council to be cognizant of that during this time, because they are undergoing quite a few changes. And it's not just city hall, all of the staff is going through a lot of changes, policy, procedures, you know, and it's really the way I look at things, and they're having to come to terms with that, because it's a lot different in some ways, so.
Well, maybe you should be telling us no more.
Yes, I think.
I mean, I know that you understand that your responsibility is to protect these people from overwork, unreasonable overwork demands. And everybody has new ideas, oh, I'd like this, I'd like that. We'll get to them when we can. But if this, unless this is not an essential item, and it's not an emergency, then we should not be asking people to work overnight, and on, I mean, nighttimes and weekends to accommodate the latest whim. That's the point of this. And if it's not going to be in here, then you need to make sure that you let this council know, the answer's no for now.
And the other also, the thing, too, is sometimes when I say, yes, we can accommodate that, that may be next month. You know, it may take us some time to get to that point. And I think there's a lot of community members that think it's just going to happen tomorrow. And I just want to make sure that that's not sometimes the case. Sometimes it takes us a while to get to that point. So, you know, there's a lot of, I think, a lot of expectations that I'm encountering of some community members that are maybe unreasonable. But when, in the future, when we do get a request, you know, I will be happy to tell you when we can't. I think the last one, when we agreed to put the agendas up, that's something we have wanted to do. Granted, you know, it's going to take a couple months for us to get there, but we will get to that point. It's just, it's not going to happen tomorrow.
You know, when we came on council, we had that sheet that was in our monthly, or our meetings, in the packet, and had a list of things that we asked to be done or considered, and the codes and so forth. And to me, it was a checklist, so that it was kept in our mind. It wasn't out of sight, out of mind. There it was. But there was not really a timetable, it was things you could work on in a systematic way and get them completed in time. And I think we've gone through a lot of it and got things accomplished. So, that's why I say we have a city manager for, but that's just my opinion, so.
If you're looking for something to be in the policies, the first sentence basically says what we're looking for. It doesn't stipulate how it's done. So I don't have a problem with the first sentence being here.
Well, okay.
Courtney and Lorraine, the old definition of a policy was it's, it's a general broad guideline to thinking, it's an approach. And that's what you're saying, Lorraine, is you want an approach that gets a handle on this stuff. So I guess my question to you, Courtney, more than anything else, is do you think you've got a handle on this, and that you can get your arms around it without pounding these poor people on Saturday mornings and evenings and all that sort of thing? I mean, because that's really the issue we're dealing with, is have you got your arms around exactly what she's identified as the problem?
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely. I think we're, I mean, the busiest department right now is the clerk's office, and reducing her workload is something we talk about constantly. So when we get, you know, when we get those ideas, it'll come to you. But when you want an increase in level of service, and a reduced work, and a reduced workload at the same time, that comes with a cost. So those are things I also, people have to keep in mind. If we keep adding things and adding things and adding things, then that comes with a cost. So, you know, please, keep that in mind. I mean, that's what we're going to come back to you with, is, you know, a proposal to do it.
Thank you.
Do you want to strike the second sentence?
Counsel wishes.
Well, the question I have, Lorraine, is do you want to, do you want to kick into that first, yeah, strike the second sentence, yes. But do you want to, at some level, insert the word city manager discretion, or whatever it happens to be in that first sentence, to kind of cover that? I mean, I.
I think it pretty much does it, Mark, really. I mean, you know, the city manager is the one who's in charge of staffing, and it basically states it. I don't know that we need to. It's kind of redundant?
Well, and are you okay with staff shall not be expected to work beyond normal duty hours?
Talking about deleting that.
That's what I'm saying, we are, okay. Make a yes on them for them. But, I mean, if we go on dumb on the premise that the first sentence really is the responsibility of the city manager, then it stands as it is without adding anything else.
And really, that could apply to any, I mean, it could apply to the rec department or Public Works. I mean, the way it sits right now, it's that, Alan would make decisions for his department. If what he's making isn't right, she's going to step in. But it gives leeway to the department heads also.
And there's, you have to also understand that there's a lot of times council makes decisions on budgets that, you know, reduces costs and things like that, that I might not necessarily agree with, and then you're, you know, expecting me to, you know, get our employees to continue that same level of service. So I'll always ask you, if you want to cut things, what service do you want to cut with that? Because every cost that we have in our budget comes with a service. So when you start cutting that budget, you need to decide what service you're going to cut at the same time. In some cases, you know, in the past, it seemed like the budgets were cut, but the expectations weren't cut. And that's when you get a situation, like particularly with Public Works, where you, you know, people are, are working beyond what you would normally ask an employee to do.
Thank you. Everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Moving on to the amendment on page three, number E2, I believe it is now.
Yeah.
Comment on that?
Oh, my God.
Which says, you know, it doesn't have to be in writing.
I'm fine with the way it's been written.
Everybody fine with it?
Yes.
I'm almost liking having that one meeting where we can think about it and do it, but whatever the wishes of council.
No, I'm fine either way. As long as it's done like this.
That's fine. Moving on to number, page four, D, council attire.
Fine.
Page six, section B, speakers.
If you got a.
I'm sorry.
A, Satellite Beach.
Fine, everybody. Thank you, I apologize.
So, just one question, are you going to do cards? I mean, how are you going to know who's Satellite Beach and who's not? Are we going to start doing signing cards?
Well, when we started, I was hoping that it would be more of a free flow, and I always say Satellite Beach residents first. And I'm hoping that people are honest enough to allow the Satellite Beach residents to speak first. And I, and if it becomes an issue, I'm sure we could go back to a sign-up sheet and cards. But we've had minimal citizens' comments on those things, and unless it's a big problem, you know, I was trying to get away from everybody having to sign in. And the reason I can say is, in years past, some people come in five minutes after, and they pick it, and that person can't speak. And I'd like to have everybody to speak that can, so. B, speakers, document?
I'm fine with the suggested changes on that.
Okay, so I'm here, fine.
Yep.
Okay. And that's it. At this time, let me open up for public comment?
Do you want a motion on this first before that?
No, we can't do it this week.
Can't do it this week.
Oh, that's right, okay. I just want to open it for public, and then we can come back and finalize it.
Yeah.
Public comment?
If you just answer her. Charlie Graham, Satellite Beach, 685 Kenwood. I think removing the proposed amendment shall not occur at the meeting, should be removed. You just, you just kind of proved your own point there, that you want to fix something, and you can't do it, you got to wait, which just slows down everything and doesn't get things done. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Further public comment?
Good evening, council, staff. Ron Dragutis, resident, Satellite Beach. Perhaps there needs to be more money budgeted, and maybe this was missed during this budget go-around and all the changes for the clerk's office. As an associate member of ICMA, I get the monthly publications to talk about transparency, document flow, information. That is critical. And as residents, as I explained in one meeting, where it was discussed that additional communication needs to be put out to the public, and how are we going to go about doing this? Well, one of the best ways, most economical ways, is to post it on the site for the boards, not only agendas, but the documentation that the boards get. I don't perceive posting it, the agenda packets the city council or boards get, prior to a meeting, to be a very difficult task, unless we're in the Flintstone ages here. That I can see that needs to be updated. I'm disappointed that we're at that point of perhaps not being able to do it easily. Secondly, an informed citizen, as it states in the most recent ICMA journal, an informed citizen with metrics and information in front of them eliminates a lot of the issues, reduces the level. When citizens come to a meeting, and I perhaps have been guilty of that in the past, where I presented stuff to the council here, and just passed it out, and I possibly had one or two copies out there, I couldn't satisfy everything out there. But when citizens bring documentation up, at the last minute, and I've seen this game played, I have seen this game played in past, past times, and maybe it's not an intentional issue. Sometimes it's just one of these things that happens, where somebody puts a document together last minute. But in all fairness, for all citizens who are part of this community, there should be some available documentation when the citizen does come up with some paper documents. I have not brought up documents to the city council or any board as of late. But I keep that always in mind, that if I do bring something, I will make some additional copies. And that reduces the level of frustration. And some of the things that are worked on now are critical, the comprehensive planning board, Board of Adjustments, some items, CRA. Certainly, the documentation should be there. It really should, to help everyone out. Because I believe we're a community here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Courtney, want to address it, or you want me to?
Sure. Staff is not arguing, first, and staff didn't present this, this is Councilman Gott's policies, that she'd like changed. But I can, and I can appreciate her protection of our time, because that's crucial, to have the councilperson that cares so much. We are not arguing against the idea of the transparency, or having the items on the, on the web in any way, shape, or form. All we're trying to say is, it might not happen tomorrow, because we are trying to do a lot of other things right now. So, I'm not sure if this was an issue last year, or the year before, if that was this, and maybe people have been waiting a longer time for it than just recently. If so, I apologize for that. But we will get to it, we just are trying to do other things at this point. The second thing is, when citizens come to the board, and, and present to any board, they're not presenting to the other citizens in the audience, they're presenting to the board. So when they have documents to, to provide to the board, then that's for the board. If they don't remember to bring copies for the other citizens in the audience, that's not a requirement we can pass on to a citizen. I mean, that's just not something we can do. They're not, they're not here to present and provide things to the other audience members. There's no way they can predict how many audience members are going to be in the audience, and so on. So I would strongly would not recommend putting anything like that as a policy, because there's just not, there's no way that we can require an audience member to, to do that when they're presenting to the board. Numerous times, you will, in other cities that have a lot of quasi judicial hearings, the attorneys will present exhibits and things to the, to the council, to the board, and audience members have no idea what's being presented. But that's just the way it is, it's a hearing. It's not, they're not there to provide information to the other members of the public.
Thank you. Public comments still open. Steve?
Steve Headley, still with it. Just a couple questions of concern. Policies and procedures may be amended in response to a written request to the council member, by any council member. Does that mean that we're going to lose or not see the changes in policy that would be voted upon, just that the written request would not be required? Just, I'm just checking. Okay, I'm just, right, so you could, so Mr. Montanaro, Councilman Don Montanaro, you could call into Ms. Barker and say, I'd like to bring this up.
And it would come to a public meeting, just like we're talking about right now?
As an agenda, as a agenda.
Okay, I'm just following the, trying to follow the flow, that's all. I have to, I have to agree with, with Councilwoman Deanon, on the, any request for additional nonessential, non-emergency work services shall be accommodated, sitting staff and reasonably permits. There's, there's a little bit of, we know better than you there. And there's, there's a reason, and I get that, okay? I understand that. But what I'm hearing is, there's no definition. But what I'm hearing is, there's no definition of what is non-emergency, non-essential. Certainly, Sunshine Law requests, for example, shall be done expeditiously, that's by code, so we eliminate all that. But I'm not sure, if you've got a person who has a home, who needs something for their home, and wants, wants to see their, to see what variances were applied for by the home, or what codification was done by the home, I'm not sure that's not important to them, and that's not an emergency to them. And I get what you're trying to say, but I think that eliminating like this really insults the intelligence of the city manager, in a sense, because you've hired her to do this, you hired her to make these kind of judgments. And to codify it just bothers me, because I think there is, there, it just doesn't have to be this way. Councilwoman Dean is right, in the sense that government's one of the very, very few companies in which the people that are the customers are the owners. Citizens own the government, citizens are the customers. And you hire people to put them in there to succeed, you hire people that are going to make decisions. But when you start talking about what's essential or non-essential, to who? And so, if you're going to give that person that authority, you don't need to codify it, especially in, in the city council. Lastly, to Mr. Dragutis's point, I, I think that if you're going to make a presentation to the city council that is part of an agenda item, in other words, if I, I come up here to talk about the sign ordinance, for example, just as a hypothetical, and part of that is some documentation that I supplied, yeah, you need to have that in early. You need to have that so we can go out to everybody, be a part of the, the packet that goes out. If you're coming up just as a speaker in response, I'm not sure that you can, you can require people to, to have it in a certain timeframe. So, in other words, to support a, an agenda item that you're presenting, you should have the documentation available for everybody to, just as a response, I'm not sure you can do it.
Thank you very much. And Steve, I, I believe we do it, I know as a council, we get the documentation here, and it's available. And I think it's one of the things why we're saying some of these things, that it's very difficult to put out if we get a request, if I make a request to Courtney, at five o'clock in the evening, when people are gone and expect to have a ton of copies made, that's not reasonable. Where it's reasonable, I know that we are putting every bit of information, and I know most councils have asked Courtney, saying we want to have every bit of background information we can, to make a logical decision in our package. Further comments? Public comments?
Did I understand that you're gonna have the city manager determine if the meeting was gonna be contentious, and we should have a police officer here?
Yes, it is her discretion that if she feels the tone, that she can get a police officer to be there. I don't believe we, as council, know what every single board is gonna be contentious or not, and I think it's the feel, if she hears it, she has that authority to do it.
My question is, how is she going to determine if the meeting's gonna be contentious? She's gonna have a crystal ball? Because I can promise you, Mr. Chairman, if, as has happened in the past, where at least three council members trampled on my First Amendment rights, I've said to you that it will be contentious. I promise you that. There's no question in my mind, and there's no question in my mind, that certain members of this council will again attempt to do that. That's, that's my first question. So, I strongly recommend that we do have a police officer present at council meetings. Just my opinion as a citizen. Number two.
Dave, this is at board and committee meetings, we're talking about.
Board, board meetings?
Yeah, not.
Those, those can, those can become contentious also. Number two, due to economic reasons, our city employees, as far as I'm concerned, had been grossly abused for the past few years. That being set aside, things couldn't be helped. However, would bring, one thing that I recall very remissly, when we had a interim city manager, she allowed not only members of council, but members of the citizens to grossly abuse our city employees, especially in our building over here, to the point where a city, former city clerk resigned due to the pressure put upon her, encouraged by members of council and the citizens. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Dave, I want to say this, we're talking policies and procedures.
Right.
And, you know, I'll entertain anything you have to say concerning the policies and procedures.
Well, the policy, the policy I'm addressing, Mr. Chairman, is that citizens can walk into this building willy-nilly and just request that city employees do their, whatever they want done. And I understand that the city manager will have control over that, but at the same time, to, I agree with Councilwoman Gott, that there's gotta be certain restrictions on what people can come in here and request, and just bring workload upon workload on our city employees. We have fantastic city employees, I've been coming to council meetings for many, many years, I have requested, I have dealt with our city employees from every department head, and I have not, never, ever been disappointed in the reaction. But at the same time, I don't come in here willy-nilly and put extra workload on them. Thank you.
Thank you for comments. Further public comments? Hearing none, back to council.
We can't vote on this tonight.
No, we can't.
We've talked about the changes we made there, are you gonna be able to put those in another draft form, and then we just vote on this?
Yeah.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, citizens. At this time, we're gonna take a ten-minute break, and we'll recess for ten minutes and we'll be back. This time, I'd like to reconvene, the city council meeting, Satellite Beach, approximately eight forty-five. Before we move on to agenda item number twelve, the city manager has asked to have the floor.
I'm sorry, but I, I wanted to address Councilwoman Dean's comment on the police officer earlier, I'm sorry, you caught, it really caught me off guard, I wasn't prepared to address it, but I think what I want you and, and the citizens to know is, the reason why we don't bring things like that up in the city, in the city council meeting is, because there's always a second side to the story, and there may be specifics to why that police officer was driving that fast, that, you know, we're unaware of until we speak with that police officer. And when we bring something like that up in the meeting, it automatically gives a connotation that they're doing something wrong, when we don't know the specific side of what they were doing. The second thing is, we don't normally discipline anyone publicly, so if there's an issue, then that's brought to me and I discipline them behind closed doors, because that's a respectful thing to do. So, I just want to make sure that that's why we, you know, people understand that that's why we do things that way, and that's why I hope that in the future, we, we do that with me, you know, on the phone or behind closed doors, in an account meeting again.
I, I will, and I apologize.
Thank you very much, Paul here, appreciate it. Moving on to agenda item number twelve, discuss, take action on ordinance number ten seventy-five. Jim?
Ordinance number ten seventy-five, in ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending chapter twenty-six environment by creating a new article seven entitled illicit discharges to regulate and prohibit illicit discharge to the city's separate storm sewer system per MS four, as required by law. Creating section twenty-six dash one thirty-one, purpose and intent, section twenty-six dash one thirty-two definitions, section twenty-six dash one thirty-three applicability, section twenty-five dash one thirty-four ultimate responsibility, section twenty-six dash one thirty-five control of pollutant contributions from interconnected MS fours, section twenty-six dash one thirty-six prohibitions, section twenty-six dash one thirty-seven stormwater discharges from commercial, industrial, or construction activities to the MS four or regulated waters, section twenty-six dash one thirty-eight authorized exemptions, section twenty-six dash one thirty-nine emergency conditions, section twenty-six dash one forty, inspection and monitoring for compliance, section twenty-six dash one forty-one reporting requirements, section twenty-six dash one forty-two penalty and additional remedies, section twenty-six dash one forty-three appeals, providing for conflicting provisions, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in code and effective date, providing for reserved sections twenty-six dash one forty-four through twenty-six dash one sixty-three, and that's the first reading of ordinance number ten seventy-five.
Could you repeat that?
Alan?
Good evening. Before you is ordinance number ten seventy-five. It will prohibit by code illicit discharges. Right now, we have a vague description of illicit discharges that does not say illicit discharge in our code. It's basically illegal dumping and things of that nature that DEP and the NPDES requirements do not accept. So, in our last audit, by the DEP for our NPDES permit, this was one of the biggest issues that they had, that we didn't have an ordinance on the books. So, we put this together through the model, EPA model ordinance, basically, this basically mirrors the model ordinance with, you know, a couple of changes as far as formatting, but everything that's in the model ordinance is in here, so we just, this is something that we need to do, and I think it's good, as the mayor said earlier, you know, there's so much focus on the lagoon now, that anything that we can do to assist in the, in restoring the health of the lagoon is a good thing, so this is a step forward.
This, this is the first step, I think, in the city's process to put into code something that's going to be long-term beneficial to the lagoon, and I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number ten seventy-five.
On first reading.
On first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilwoman Gott, to adopt ordinance number ten seventy-five on first reading. Further council comments? Hearing none, open it up for public comment.
Just one question, following in Councilwoman Gott's edit and reading, when you read the line, you said section twenty-five dash one thirty-four. Did you mean twenty-six?
If I said twenty-five, it was supposed to be twenty-six.
Okay. All the rest of them were twenty-six, except that one, you did say twenty-five, I wanted to make sure that I was reading a typo, or you said it wrong. That was it.
Hands off.
Yeah, well, I, I caught that too, I just didn't want to call you out.
It's contagious.
Any further public comment on this agenda item? Hearing none, back to council, council, any further discussion? Alan, this is a mandate too, this is gonna help us on the whole process that we're coming. Okay, thank you very much. Lenore?
Yes.
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 Yes. Ocean Carries, sir, nothing, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alan. Moving on to agenda item thirteen. Agenda items for our regular council meeting on October sixteenth.
Yes, sir. We have a proclamation regarding National American Indian Heritage Month. We will also be receiving a presentation by the Economic Development Commission regarding improvement, business improvement initiatives, as well as, you know, our P4 initiatives. So, they're, basically, council had asked that they come and present when we became members, and they're coming to do that, so. The second is a presentation with the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council. This is still in the works, so I'll keep you updated, and I'll update all of you by phone when I figure out what we're doing with this one. We have the soccer league, three items coming to you, an agreement, a donation, notice the donation made me smile, the donation, and a grant, so we will have that for you. We will have the beach renourishment easement on your agenda as well. And then you will have the second reading for the ordinance you just passed, and then you will also have a first reading for the fertilizer ordinance on your agenda. So, it's a pretty hefty agenda, we apologize for that, but we do need to get some of these things out of the way.
You also need to have the take action on amended council policies and procedures.
We will add that, yes, ma'am.
And I'd like to see a proclamation declaring October Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Great.
I don't know if this is an action item, like, or discussion, but a lot of the landscaping has died along South Patrick Drive. I know we're coming up to the one-year warranty, so.
We're down there.
I just, I don't know if we need to discuss it, but I, I think it's December, so it can be replaced within one year, but we need to take care of that.
Usually, at that time, they do a survey. And we, they go through each thing, section by section.
Oh, the two? Okay.
And so, we'll, we'll go ahead and get that proclamation on, and.
Thank you. Any further agenda items needed, please, see Courtney, give some time, appreciate it. Courtney, thank you. Moving on to agenda item number fourteen, appointments to boards, question. Jim, you're gonna have an answer for us tomorrow? Okay. Okay, how do we want to handle?
We can do a conditional appointment, if we're interested in appointing Linda Loizzo to City of.
That's what I have down here, I just want to make sure everybody feels comfortable with that.
It'll be a conditional appointment pending.
Pending the city attorney's decision regarding dual office holding.
Thank you. Okay, council wishes on appointments to boards. Do we have the beautification board?
Yeah, I'll move that, for the beautification board, I'll move that we reappoint regular member Bill Mayer, regular member Charles Meacham, regular member Kathy Now to the beautification board, with their terms ending as indicated on this memorandum.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Further discussion by?
Yeah, I do have one thing on Charles Meacham, Meacham, this was put out the dais, his attendance has not been very good. I think everybody got it.
It's in this, Frank, it's in this pack.
Actually, it's been very good.
They're all excused abstances.
Can you explain that can excuse, Lenore?
Excused abstances are where the secretary will call on board members, or they will notify the secretary that they're unable to attend a meeting, so we're trying to establish a one, private meeting.
Okay. So, it's not, it's not excused in the sense that the rest of the board members excuse them, that's what I'm trying to say, so that means that they call beforehand.
He's excused himself, in other words. And he's got six out of eight he's missed.
Six out of eight, I, I question that, if excuse only means I just couldn't make it, and I don't know that, I mean, I wish it was a little different, there was some parameters there, if he was ill and he couldn't make it, or something fine, but it still doesn't allow us to have full boards a lot of times, and we really want to make sure that the boards are attended by the members, so.
He was on this, he's been on the board for a while, and he works for True Green, so he does work during the day, but he was very interested in what was going on in the board, and I don't know if this is just a recent occurrence, or what's going on, maybe we should, before we appoint him to the board, maybe we should have the board liaison talk liaison talk to him and ask him if he still wants to really stay on the board and be committed to the board before we reappoint him.
I had actually been able to get in touch with him through region, and he was still able to serve. He was grateful to serve. That was his comment.
I can speak for him as well. He's very much would want to continue.
And this, this is an issue that needs to be addressed in terms of what's excused. Just because somebody calls in and says, hey, I can't make it, that does not constitute an excused absence. And I am working on some materials to put together a city handbook for boards, city boards and committees, and that will contain definitions of a lot of things, to include what constitutes an excused absence.
Let me ask you, council wishes here, so we can move on. If we put this appointment off, Charlie, it would be, have to be put off till the first council meeting in November, correct? Or could it be brought back on the 17th?
You just don't interview on the second meeting in November.
Okay, great. My feeling is, is.
Can I finish my thought?
Okay.
Thank you. When, when these folks have an expectation that, you know, that, that the system allows them just to call in and say, I'm not coming, so I'm excused, it's, it's kind of difficult then to jerk the chain real tight and say, no, you have violated our policy, which apparently is not explained to you. So I think we need to let all of our board members know our policy regarding attendance, that we consider it important, and just not be, just calling in to say you can't make it is not an excused absence. So.
I, I agree, but in the same token, I would like to talk to this gentleman before I reappoint him.
Yeah.
Because I think it's important to be there and be part of it, so.
Do we not just have this discussion with respect to changing the policies and procedures? Irregular attendance may cause for the removal by council from boards and committees. I didn't propose that. But again, I said it was subjective. Did I, subjective, did I not? Apparently, he has missed eight meetings, or six out of eight. I mean, that's just irregular. I'm sorry, that's just not acceptable. And we just approved that in our policy, so I'm gonna make a motion that.
Yeah, but we are.
Well, I'm not gonna make a motion. I, I'm just not gonna afford him being on a, on a board after his attendance record, because it's irregular attendance.
I don't mind amending my motion to exclude him from that motion, and to amend the motion to say that the appointment of Mr. Meacham will be considered at the next, at the first meeting in Murawee.
We can do it if we're not gonna, we can do it October 16.
Oh, okay.
Because if we're not doing interviews, it's just an appointment.
17.
17.
It's the 16th of October.
October 16.
Yeah.
Is that okay? That's our next meeting?
And I'll amend the second to include that also.
Amended motion by, amended motion by Councilwoman Gott, second amended by Councilman Montanaro. So we're reappointing Bill Meyer and Kathy Now? Yes.
Right.
So what's the, who's got the homework assignment on? Charlie Meacham?
I'll take the homework assignment.
Okay.
And I, back to council policies and procedures, I'm getting tired now, but there is a thing in here that says when appointments will be made, and my recollection is that that will be done at the first council meeting of a month. So if that's the case, then he would move to the November.
I don't have mine here. Is it first council meeting of the month, or the interviews were the first council meeting of the month?
I don't know. Hang on a minute.
Well, let's have him at the first allotted meeting, and then move on.
First permitted meeting.
First permitted meeting. Yeah. Okay. Okay. Any further discussion from council? Here and none. Lenore?
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Senator J.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Kathy Hendricks to the Board of Adjustment term ending 11/16.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, a second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Further discussion?
Yeah, I, I look back at, at some of the timeframes, some of these folks have been on these boards, and I think this woman's been on the board for 18 years. We just keep reappointing the same people over and over again, and I think that's why people don't come out to put their applications in. So with that said, because of longevity, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no.
You know, let me address that if I can, and yes, that's your priority to do it. You know, when I look and see vacancies, vacancies on boards, you know, the people need to come forward to help us out in that. And if they don't come forward, and we have to go out and pick, you know, and find people, it makes it difficult, but point taken.
Any further discussion? Here and none, Lenore?
Councilwoman Dean?
No.
Councilwoman Gott?
Wait a minute, what are we voting?
We're voting on Christina Hendricks to reappoint.
Did we vote on the beautification board?
Yes, ma'am.
Is I'm here?
You weren't here.
Okay. My vote is yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Senator J.
Okay. Code enforcement, we have no, we have two vacancies, again.
What are we doing with the?
Two regular members we need.
Right here. We haven't done that yet.
That, CPAB, we can do one of them. We can do both of them in contingent on.
Correct. That's correct, yes.
Right. We have nothing on there. We have Comprehensive Plan Advisory Board, and we have two applicants. So you want to take them individually, or as a group? Someone needs to make a motion.
I'll move that we appoint Christina LaRoe to the Comprehensive Planning Advisory Board as an alternate member, and that we conditionally appoint Linda Loizao as an alternate member of the Comprehensive Planning Board. Her appointment contingent upon a favorable decision from the city manager regarding the issue of dual office holding.
City Attorney.
What did I say?
City Manager.
Hello. That's what I meant. My friend.
Second. I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Any discussion concerning the contingency part, any other part of it?
Nope.
Here and none, Lenore?
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Any other further on the board?
And again, anybody, you know, if there's vacancies, we'll need to get applicants in before we can make changes.
And there also is, there's an alternate, there's an alternate position available on the CPAB, or on the Board of Adjustment anyway.
Moving on to agenda item 15, adoption of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 18, 2013 meeting as submitted.
Second. Motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilwoman Gott to approve the minutes. Any further discussion from council? Here and none, Lenore?
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Senator J.
Yes.
Motion passes. Any further discussion before the board? Here and none, meaning's adjourned. Thanks to everybody.
Forty-eight hours? Oh, my gosh. You've got, you've got.